Oh, is it done? Okay. Everyone is present, which means we have a quorum. Communications from Mayor's office, I have none this evening. Public comment, we do have a few. Just to remind everyone of the rules, obviously mostly know, I think, I know most of you here that are wishing to speak, but three-minute time limit. State your name and address, you do have to live in the city, or be a taxpayer in the city. So, and it has to pertain to something on the agenda. Ryan Warholz, if I'm saying that right, apologize if it's wrong.
Wackels.
What?
Wackels.
Oh, okay.
No worries either way. Yeah, Ryan Wackels, S-70W-18855, Gold Drive. I just wanted, can I ask questions?
We can't answer them, you can ask them when we get to the item.
Okay, well, I'm asking because I'm not sure exactly how this all goes, but Neil amended for Resolution 80. I would imagine that that's what's going for vote at this later point in time, not even a head nod, okay. All right, well, then, in that case, I want to say, as a member living within the Lake District, that I am in favor of the resolution as it is since it's been amended. However, yes, I am not opposed to still revisiting ways earlier in the year to keep it advantageous for Little Muskego Lake, as well as I understand the city's concerns and other lakes within the city. So, I am in favor of the resolution as it stands with the current amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard Schneider.
Yeah, I have to write up, babe. I'd like to comment on...
Name and address?
Howard Schneider, West 186, South 6850 Jewel Press Drive. And what I'd like to discuss is ordinance 1436, which talks about replacing the spotters on ski boats with a rearview mirror, which I think's a real bad idea. What this means is people can go out there without anybody watching the skier behind them. And I sent an email to somebody, Alderman, here earlier today, recounting an instance I saw in Little Muskego Lake here about 15 years ago, where a boat was towing a skier. Guy wasn't really going that fast, ran right over top of a rubber raft with two people in it. And fortunately, the people weren't hurt, but it's a lot busier now, people are a lot more distracted, their cellphones are talking on, people are taking selfies, who knows what all's going on out there. And I'm just worried with the prevalence of kayaks, low-profile boats and that kind of stuff, and there's a lot of them on the lake that something could easily happen. I don't know, I guess this is a state mandated thing, but...
We'll get to it when it's the agenda item.
Yeah, as far as I know, the city can have more restrictive ordinances, as opposed to the state ordinances, and maybe the attorney could enlighten us on that, but I think this is kind of a dangerous thing. And I can see something happening, and I understand that, you know, when I was younger and was skiing, it was hard to get that third person sometimes, and I'm probably going to tick off all the skiers in the room here, but, you know, that's the way it is. I don't want to see anybody get hurt, and I can see how easily what happened. If anybody has been on Little Muskego on a hot sunny Sunday afternoon, you know what it's like out there. The boat drivers are trying to watch boats coming from all different directions, they're trying to watch the skier, they're trying, in their rearview mirror, if this ordinance goes through, and there's just too much to watch. I think it's dangerous, and I think the city should not, you know, add this to this ordinance, so, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Fries.
And with the previous discussion, excuse me, about the fees and everything, where the city would drop off for the Lake District, I just want to say this. I live like about four houses away from Pleasant View Launch Ramp. I see how many boaters come in and do not pay, and, you know, that's revenue for the city. And, you know, I guess I'm to the point where I'm going to offer, I'll put in a high-end security camera to catch that and put a nasty sign down there, "You gotta pay if you're going to launch your boat." I can't imagine how much additional dollars would be coming in. I'm guessing 90% of the people that launch on Pleasant View Ramp do not pay. I see it every year. I've been on the lake for like 25 years, and I've been president of the Lake Association, so I'm very concerned about that. So, think about that, before you pass something, you know, let's do that. I'll even offer to pay for that camera on Pleasant View, so that way you can see the additional increase that you'd get, which I know you will, and that's for the other three launch ramps as well, okay? Please consider something like that. I'll offer that camera, I'll get one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lee Elgar. I think he left. Susie Link.
I've seen Susie before.
She was here last week.
Susie Link, W-172S-7297, Land and Drive. Okay, I don't want to eat the thing. First of all, I just cannot resist making the comment, and this is not a slam on the Big Lake, but in the previous meeting, two city officials, two people paid by the city are now officers of the Big Lake District. We don't get paid staff for the Little Lake, so that's one way we're different, that's one of a million ways we're different, so the argument of parity is really nonsense. You have to analyze the facts. And part of the reason I'm speaking to this, even though you have amended the resolution, and I thank you for that, but we just went through this in 2003, 2004, and we went through and analyzed property by property, and the first person to sit down was Common Council President Slocum at the time, before he became mayor, and he sat down with Jay Erdman, and they went over every single piece of property. And I can prove that further, because Mr. Borgman, the day he took office, came and met with me to take me to look at a property that was a problem. So, the one thing I wanted to leave you guys with is, your resolution still contains wrong information, and if you leave the wrong information in, you are going to keep making the same mistakes over and over. Let's see, I know I'm running out of time, I'm trying to do this quickly, and I have...
Minute and a half.
Okay, your first paragraph of the resolution says that we agree that the relationship is governed by Chapter 33. We're good with that. Number two paragraph says the city operates the dam for ice damage. That's not why a drawdown is done. Ice damage is a secondary concern to human safety and flooding, and the reason for the drawdowns and the depths of the drawdowns is so that we have holding capacity in the spring when flooding is prevalent. We just had a flood about a week and a half ago where our piers were underwater. I had an extra pontoon boat, it was better than mine, but I had to give it back. So, and what the city budgeted, I couldn't find the 2020 budget, I don't know where it was, but in 2018, I believe, the last one I could find, the city paid less than $5,000 for all dam operation, and that was for city bridges and dams. And so, how big an expense and how much of an effort is the city putting in to say that it is, it deserves to be compensated more or recognized more for what it does by adjusting a dam elevation twice a year? I got a problem with that. Okay, also, paragraph three, it says that there are, I believe you said 28 parcels. No, there aren't. There are 19 separate parcels that are lake access lots, and then there's a seven-acre park called Isle Isle Park that translates to 25 additional properties, and even Mayor Slocum agreed to that back in the day. And at that point, it's 44 properties versus 28 properties that the city owns and contributes, gives us pressure from.
You have 30 seconds.
That also ignores the fact that the city uses us as a stormwater detention facility, which means that all sorts of runoff is dumped into our lake because the city has diverted stormwater that would not naturally flow into the lake. The stormwater covered two houses from me is a foot taller than I am, okay? That's a pretty big pipe to dump in water and use us as your sewer. So, when you say that you are only affecting us or impacting us by the properties that you say you own or acknowledge you own, you're ignoring the other damage and harm that you're doing to the lake. If, I respectfully suggest that if you want to talk about this, I have all the records from '03, '04. And if you want to talk about it and say what's fair, what can be compared, apples and oranges, we can do that, but you'll do it on no notice in front of a gun, because that's not the way to get things done constructively. I mean, if that were the case, we'd go after every other sacred cow in the community, and there are plenty of them.
Thank you.
Maybe someone help her?
Yes, please. Can I take one?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Before I get to the last person, I apologize, Jim in Rainey. Senior Taxi's not on the agenda, so you can't speak to it tonight. I just want to let you know, because that's what you put on here, okay? It's the law, we can't do it. Anyhow, so, Steve Olson.
I was prepared for much more. Steve Olson, S-74W-19088, Bay Court. I am the president of Little Muskego Lake District. I was prepared for much more of a debate here. I'm happy with what you guys have come up with, I think it's a wise decision. Clearly, for the last 50 years, this has been going on in this manner, and that to carry it on forward and understand the value of the lake is wise on your part, so I thank you for that. I also agree that the lakes are completely different, the pressure on Little Muskego Lake is over the top compared to what it is on Big Muskego. You've got, you know, thousands of launches that occur during the year where Big Muskego doesn't see anything like that. They also have support from city officials, paid staff, they also get support from Tom Zagar, the conservationists for the city, so they are getting funding in just different manner. So, they are getting a lot of value to help support that lake also, to make it a good place. So, anyway, the point is, I appreciate what you're saying, I agree with your amendment on the resolution. And then the one other comment I wanted to make, since Howie brought up the skiing thing, I agree with matching the state statute to keep it consistent, because the confusion that occurs when everybody else is all over the map is, people come in and they don't know. They read the state book that they get, they get the boater safety handbook, and they look at it and they go, okay, here's what it is. They come out here, and then all of a sudden they get stopped and they say, "What did I do?" And it becomes a real confusion. It should be matching and make it consistent. So, anyway, that's my point, so thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment. We now move on to consent agenda.
Approval of operator licenses, approval of common council minutes for September 10th, 2019, and Resolution 81 authorizing resolution for urban forestry grant and urban forestry catastrophic storm grant programs.
Need a motion to approve and gross?
Motion to approve and gross.
They have it on here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm forgetting it's on here. We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any, if there's any discussion, it's your request to speak, and I see none of that, so please cast your vote. It's approved unanimously. No new business, we have unfinished business, and I will wait till Jill is ready for me to...
Resolution 80, resolution to determine the city of Muskego and Little Muskego Lake District roles and responsibilities with regard to lake management, drawdowns, dredging projects, and equitable lake district fee payments.
And first, we do need a motion to put it on the floor. Where's the button?
There's nothing.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're catching up here.
Oh, wait, 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 okay.
Now we're voting.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, can you make a motion now?
Yes, there, there's a motion and there's a second.
Okay.
Okay, if there's anyone who wishes to speak, please, Alderman Kubaki.
I just want to restate my objection, that I think that the amount that was requested in this, in this motion is extraordinarily high, given that while there is support from the staff on Little Muskego Lake, there is none for Lake Dune. It's not an economic need from the people who live in that lake district, it's their preservation of their backyard, which is their property. I just think it's a foolish waste of our money.
Anyone else?
Can I just have clarification that we are in fact voting on the...
Sure.
There's no amendment yet, if that's what you're asking.
That's what we're asking.
If that's, this is the, as presented, the 28 parcels and the $10,000, that's what's on the floor at the moment.
I would like to make...
Can you press, you gotta press.
Amend.
There you go, thank you.
I don't know if, well, if I'm doing the right thing or not there, but...
You're correct, you're good.
I would like to amend the resolution, starting at, now therefore be resolved, that in, beginning with the calendar year 2020, the city would voluntarily provide 15% of the operating budget of the lake, and it would, we would establish an upper limit on the support by averaging the last five-year budgets together and coming up with a nice round figure, I suppose.
I'll get to that.
And everything that's beyond there will be struck.
Well, just wait, I'll...
Sir, go ahead.
Is this the last thing? Not with the result? Yes.
I can't see. I need to make a couple comments.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, let me just jump in here for a minute. The proposal that's being amended, I understand. What I want to point out is that the resolution, the way it's written, does have some mistakes. And so, when you do these whereas clauses, they kind of tell a story, they try to go back and tell the facts. And when I wrote this, I only had a certain amount of facts. Now, as of today, with the help of Jill, I was able to find some documents that were, go way back. And so, like, for example, whereas number four and whereas number five are no longer correct the way they're written. So, what I would like to do, if it's okay with everybody here, is to take what you're saying as your amendment, but to basically have you defer, let me put that into a, into a new resolution, and let me fix the facts in the other whereas clauses, and then bring that to you as a resolution that you can approve at your next meeting.
Will that in any way prevent this from being included in this budget?
It shouldn't, because we'll do it at the next meeting.
No.
Just checking.
No, we're not, but the adoption isn't until next month.
I know Susie also pointed out that there were some historical facts in there that could be changed. I don't know if that's really...
Well, I'll look at that, but my main concern was, whereas is, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are the ones that I need to correct.
So, I want to be clear, what are you asking them to do right now, so you can be...
I would be asking you to defer this, so that I can prepare a resolution and come back to have it approved next meeting.
And the committee of the whole recommendation is what he'll put in there?
Right.
So, we don't need a motion now, right? Am I saying that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Hang on, hang on, we're still talking. Hang on, we're still talking.
If you rescind it, because then he can go back and take it from the committee of the whole, which is the same...
Haven't rescinded it yet, hang on.
No, no.
Am I right?
Yes. Because you have a second up there, I put a request to speak. We can actually approve this pending...
You're actually, you're number two to request.
We have approved things in the past pending grammatical and...
Why are we pushing these buttons? I'm confused. Why do we have this request to speak?
I hate to say it, but I'm looking through the boomerang.
Hold on, hold on. Alderman Kubaki is up, he pressed button, and so we'll all get a chance, so let's go in the order.
Just a clarification, will we be using the budgeted figures or the actual figures for that computation?
If I can clarify.
Yes.
If deferred tonight, then it will come back to you with any of the clarifications that he needs to make, and the committee of the whole's recommendation, which is doing that 15% up to that amount.
That's 15% of their budget?
Yes.
And then you would take an average of the last five years?
That's how it'll come back.
That's the cap, that's on there.
Gotcha.
And the only reason I'm saying all this is, these aren't just grammatical errors, I've got to change the facts. For example, it says that we paid the fees and commenced the lawsuit, that didn't happen. Now that I found information, which I explained to Alderman Wolf earlier, I found information that really corrects that, and I can't go, I can't ask you to go forward when I've got, when those facts need to be changed. I'll still put in what you want, it'll still be exactly what you recommended at committee of the whole, it'll just be a resolution that you can pass next time, and you'll get to see it ahead of time.
Alderman Wolf?
Well, we already have a motion and a second, and I'd like to see this go through pending the changes, so we don't have to do a revote on this, because I want to make sure everybody's here when it votes, and I want to make sure it's in the budget, and we spent a lot of time on this, and we had a lot of people here, and we don't need to bring them all back again to hear their stories. So, I think we can do this pending the legal changes and push it through. We've done this in the past.
Would that be any different than you making changes on contracts that are...
The changes I make to contracts are just minor little things. I'm saying this is more than just a minor little change, but I'll take your advisement, as long as you're willing to accept what I write next time, without really having to look at it, I'll take that if that's what you want.
I'm just concerned about the voting and timing and people available and...
I would agree. Yeah, there's a lot of, we did that last time to the senior taxi people, too, made them come back. And, you know, I'm just afraid of a boomerang on this thing.
Well, I suppose if somebody then disagreed with what I wrote, you could then not approve it, and we could go back to where we were. It's a little bit weird way to do it, but I'll do it that way.
So, then this would be approved?
Pending what Alderman Wolf said.
So, is that your, who made the motion?
Neil.
Alderman Borgman?
I can't push anything on you. Oh, I still up. What if we strike the whereas?
You mean, strike the whole paragraph?
I don't know, just asking you.
I suppose you could...
Would it hurt?
I suppose the resolution would still, would still make sense, you just wouldn't have the little bit of the history from 1981.
We can strike it and you can add it in, the history, and then we all approve pending you're adding in the history.
I like that better.
And then we move on.
Hold on, what you're saying, you're saying we strike it, and then you still want me to add in, is that what you're saying?
We, someone for a future council should know the history, so we don't have to go through this again.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so Alderman Borgman, that's your amended motion?
I'll go along with that. That was my amendment.
And then, you can't, because he was the first.
I pushed it, it didn't work.
You know, he has to amend his that was on the floor.
I seconded.
Okay, just want to make clear, it's the only way we can get this done, following the rules. Okay, everybody understand what that, what's on the floor.
That's fine.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, please cast your vote.
I have the floor.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second.
You want me to talk some more?
Please, no.
So, we got to square what we're doing, right?
Is approved 5 to 2.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
What are you asking?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the amended, and now you got to vote on the resolution as amended. Correct. So, yes, now you have to cast your vote on the resolution as amended. Thank you, Jill, almost forgot that.
One did not vote.
I think you didn't change the screen.
Yeah, I always see some...
Oh, wait, hold on, okay. Well, it's saying...
They can't control all the leak anymore.
Well, let's just do it like...
Do you want to do just a vote?
Is it stuck?
Just do a roll call.
Yeah, so this is as amended.
Right.
This is the resolution as amended, and you're going to do roll call?
Yeah.
All the person there?
No.
Kubaki?
No.
Inglehart?
Yes.
Kapusta?
Yes.
Borgman?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Five in favor and two opposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, you want me to just go, or are you...
Okay. Okay, we need a motion now for the ordinance, 132.
Want me to read it, or?
Oh, no, that's not, 1433. An ordinance to amend Chapter 132, Section 132-9 of the Municipal Code of the City of Muskego regarding alcohol beverages, temporary licenses, second reading.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, please cast your vote. It's approved unanimously.
Ordinance 1434, an ordinance to amend...
35, oh, no, 34, I'm sorry, go ahead.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 267, Section 267-7 of the Municipal Code of the City of Muskego regarding peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants, investigation and issuance, second reading.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any request to speak? Please cast your vote. It's approved unanimously.
Ordinance 1435, an ordinance to amend Chapter 191, Section 191-24 of the Municipal Code of the City of Muskego, outdoor and refuse burning, second reading.
And bring it up?
Oh, is it there?
No. Okay, we need, we have a motion and a second, and so...
This one I need to jump in on. At the first reading, we had talked, if you look at your new packet, the proposed amendment, there's an N where I crossed out. Now, it talked about the wind direction and the smoke or soot in the buildings. That was in our old code, and the reason that was in there was to kind of help the police officers define nuisance, what would a nuisance be? But since that went in there, I know Alderman Inglehart had asked questions about it, I got some other questions about it, so it was easier to talk to Chief Renz and say, "Let's just take that out and let them use their..." say, let's just take that out and let them use their discretion in terms of whether or not they think something's a nuisance. And I think police use discretion every day, and I think that's the best, best way to do this. So that's why I made that amendment.
Why is this, we had a motion and a second, what's going on?
I thought he wanted to move to amend, I wasn't sure. No, Alderman Borgman?
You don't need to amend, right? Or do you have to amend?
Right, we have to amend.
You have to amend.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just, I want, I had the same feeling that we had last week that we expressed, that I think the thing tries to be so inclusive that it gets to be the point where it's, it's just too vague, and I'm feeling that anything that, like that could not ever be given a ticket or anything, because it's just too, it's too broad. And I, like I say, we tried to make it so inclusive that it got to be mutual exclusive.
That's why I took it out.
But did you take out that whole, that whole section?
The whole section.
The whole section.
All N is out, and again, now it just comes down to 15 miles.
And you think that a judge will say that the discretion is, of a nuisance is, doesn't have to be defined more accurately than just...
No, I think you'll just put, you would just put the facts out before the judge, and you'd have to, you know, try to prosecute it and say, we think this would be a nuisance, and then that particular judge, I can't define it, because the minute I define it, everybody gets upset that we're being too this, we're being too that. So I think an officer just has to go out there and make a determination and say, yes, it was blowing into other people's homes or something, and I think that's a nuisance. I'd have to present that to the judge, and then you see where the judge goes with it. That's the whole discretionary part.
And I think they give you the option to tell you to put it out first.
Well, and that's...
That's part of the...
If I talk to Chief Wrenz, I mean, 99% of the time...
If you're cooperative.
They tell you to put it out, you put it out, and life goes on. I haven't had any citations since I started this job for this.
What is going on? Because, do we have a motion? Do we have what's going on?
Yeah.
I'm trying to, is that what that's saying? Okay, so...
The screen is very confusing.
Alderman Engelhardt, well, there's this motion thing sitting out there, so I'm confused.
Yeah, this motion thing, but number one, I want to know, because if you need an amendment, I'm ready to offer the amendment to strike it.
Well, we have to have a second first to amend it, right?
There's no motion, there's been no motion.
Have the motion on the floor or not?
It's saying that, but there is none. That's the dilemma we have.
We're discussing it without a motion on the floor yet?
But we have, it's on the floor, but now we're, we don't have an amendment.
Right. Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because I will offer the amendment.
Then you hit motion?
I don't have a motion.
Got a motion now. Now Kevin's got a motion.
Kevin, what's your motion?
Did you motion?
I didn't motion.
Oh.
I didn't touch it.
Can we, okay, John, can you hit your motion?
Give me a button, and I'll push it.
Motion. Don't you have a motion?
Motion, there. It was taken.
All right, now what's your motion to?
Okay, my...
Is there an amendment on the screen?
There's an amend.
Now there's an amend.
Okay.
So now I can go there, okay. There you go. So you pushed it for me.
Yeah, so that's the motion.
But he didn't state it yet.
He didn't say what his motion is.
So state what your motion is, so we can get a record.
As an amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay, as presented in the second, the second presentation of the recommendation, it's in our packet, to strike that last paragraph from what we had as the first reading last time.
And do we have a second to that motion? And Alderman Kubaki seconded. Is there any request to speak regarding the amendment?
Yes.
Press your button, if you want to speak.
I don't have a button.
You have RTS.
I don't have an RTS.
Nobody has?
We're done.
Well, it was coming up before.
Is it there now?
Yep.
Okay, Alderman Engelhardt?
All right, I just wanted to comment on this, the logic of it and what I queried. When they go out, they don't really offer citations right away, they ask people to stop, you know, that's, that's been typical. Years ago, I had a, one party was in my neighborhood, anytime anybody lit a fire, they would, they would immediately call it in. And so I think this is a more equitable way to approach it, given that officers can use their good discretion on it. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this, striking that for this reason.
It's been our past practice. Any other requests to speak? I see none. So now you will cast your vote on the amendment, which strikes N?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm trying to clarify.
I think I did it right. No.
It is unanimous?
Nice.
So now you will vote on the...
Amendment.
Amend, right.
They did the amendment. Now they're going to vote on the ordinance as amended.
Right.
Okay, you're right.
Tell you this.
Soon as she re-do's it.
So the motion and second is already there, they just have to vote on it as amended.
Now they're voting on the ordinance as amended.
Right.
I made a motion and seconded.
Motion and a second? No, we didn't have to have that, did we? Yes, we did. Okay, sorry.
Neil?
All right. Cast your vote, everyone.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. That was hard. Okay. Are you going to read the next one? Why don't you put it up, because then, that's what happens, we get off, and we put it up there before you read it.
Yes, okay. Ordinance 1436, an ordinance to amend chapter 278, section 278-7 of the municipal code of the city of Meskigo regarding public waters and beaches, boats used for towing, second reading.
Okay, looking for, we have a motion and a second. Are there any requests to speak? Okay, please cast your vote on ordinance 1436.
That was smooth. That was smooth as we did.
It is approved 6 to 1. And then we have review of committee reports.
Finance Committee, August 27th, Public Works and Safety Committee, August 19th.
Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $41,156.99.
You got to do the...
Oh, you have to press the...
Thank you.
And we have a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $422,197.89.
We have a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Motion to approve wire transfers for debt service in the amount of $1,771,703.63.
We have a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Motion to approve wire transfers for payroll in the amount of $347,345.87.
We have a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously. Okay, no city official reports, communications or miscellaneous business? Any updates? I'm assuming not.
No.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Little Meskigo will hold their annual meeting next Thursday, a week off, on the 3rd, 7:00 PM here.
Okay, and future agenda items, reconsiderations? Is there a motion to adjourn? We need it in the system, thank you. We have a motion, we need a second. We have a second. Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously, we are adjourned.